This is the August 8th, 2024 meeting of the Haverford Township Planning Commission. Meeting's now called to order. Would you call the roll, please?
All right, Mr. Channon? Yeah.
Here.
Starting with you. Ms. Dobbs?
Here.
Mr. Welsh?
Here.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Fiori Mondo?
Here.
Mr. Montressor?
Here.
The minutes will reflect that Julia Phillips is unavailable tonight. She told us that. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to change the agenda in a minor way to take the review of the minutes first. There's two sets of minutes of the Planning Commission, one for May 9th and the other for June 13th, both 2024. Are there any comments, changes to the May 9th, 2024 minutes? Are there any changes to the June 13th, 2024 minutes or concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the May 9th, 2024 minutes and a motion to approve the June 13th, 2024 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes of May 9th and June 13th, 2024 are approved. The next item on our agenda is the Haverford Middle School preliminary final land development plans. This is Dubois. For the record, you should restate your name and title.
Thank you for having us back once again, Carolyn Dubois with KNW. You can say it either way, KNW Engineers, and we're the civil engineer for the project. Okay, so since I was here last month, I believe I have mentioned that the week following last month's Planning Commission meeting, we did attend the zoning hearing board, meaning we had put in a zoning variance application requesting relief for three existing nonconformities on the middle school site, and that was for the maximum impervious coverage, maximum building coverage, and for the parking requirement. And all three of those variances were approved at that meeting, okay? And then, again, when I was here last month, I think we had just received our first review letter from Pinoni. So since that time, we addressed every single comment that we have received and resubmitted the plans for review. And I will say that frankly, you know, again, since it's just the additions, really not much other land development on this, the comments are all stormwater management related and primarily stormwater calculations related, okay? I would say the one change that we made, if you look at the plan here, previously, if you remember me using that word, the acronym MRC, it's Managed Release Concept, kind of simplified within the courtyard and took out that Managed Release Concept. It's been replaced with a larger inlet that, you know, controls the rate, still can receive surface water, but it, you know, still has rate control in it. And then outside, down outside the, in the lawn area to the west of the, to the east of the school is an infiltration bed, so it's underground, so all you'll see from the surface is grass, and we were able to adjust the size of that to handle all of the impervious area on the site. So post-development, we have, you know, less runoff than we do in pre-development. So happy to answer any questions. Again, the calculations, a lot of nitty-gritty stuff, and I know that that's under review by Chuck right now, and, but I think at this stage, you know, I think we feel pretty confident that we've addressed all of the comments satisfactorily and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
I have a couple.
Angelo Capuzzi?
Yeah. Thank you for making those changes to the proposed former management plan. I think that'll save district a few bucks in the long run. Specifically regarding the proposed sewage bed out in the athletic field.
Right.
I was wondering if you could add a detail to the plan which identifies like a distribution piping system within the bed.
Absolutely.
So that the water gets in there and gets distributed evenly throughout the bed. And within that system, I think it's important that we include like a cleanout location and an observation port.
Observation port.
So that in the future, we can look down there and see if the thing's working or not.
No problem whatsoever.
There's a couple of existing drainage structures, inlets, that your sheverite knows is being filled with debris, I imagine.
Correct, yeah.
So I think it'd be a good idea to include in your contract for this project to clean those structures out. And then, final thought would be that the yard drain 202, that that be lowered like six inches, the top of grate be lowered six inches, so it becomes kind of like a more effective, more effectively collect the runoff from the contributing drainage area.
Yeah, kind of sump it, absolutely, okay. Those are easily addressed, I can have those done next week easy.
One other item, you said your zoning board approved your requests, right?
They did, they did, yeah. I don't think we've gotten the written.
They approved it the night of, and the actual decision, they have 45 days to send it to you, but.
That's right. That's right, okay.
All right, well, if the timing works out, if a copy of that decision could be added to the record plan so that anyone looking at this plan in the future would see exactly what the zoning board approved. If they don't have an order, you can certainly paraphrase what they approved, you know, in your own words.
Yeah, because on the cover sheet, we do indicate that we have requested these, so then we would change the cover sheet to indicate the date, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, you said there were three, one was impervious surface coverage, the other was building surface coverage?
Yeah, it was impervious coverage, and it was building coverage, and then the parking accounts, yeah.
Are there any other comments or concerns from members of the Planning Commission? Hearing none, we can entertain a motion tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary final land development plans for the additions to the Haverford Middle School, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the remaining comments in the Pinoni review letter from July 25th, 2024 be addressed to the satisfaction of the township. Number two, that the variances approved by the zoning hearing board be added to the record plan. Number three, that the top of grate elevation at yard drain 202 be lowered by at least six inches. Number three, that detail be added to plans to identify the distribution piping within the infiltration trench BMP-1, to include a location for a cleanout and an observation port. And number four, that existing drainage structures within the work area be cleaned of all debris as part of this contract. I also recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the several waivers that the applicant has requested.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Just one question, the drainage area, that is separated off from fields where the kids are? Does that have a fence around it, or is it part of the field where the kids play?
Yeah, actually, once it's installed, it'll be covered with grass, so it's subsurface. And so it's at that lower right corner, so it's not really fenced off or separated, but it'll be, you know, since it's underground, covered with topsoil, and then, you know, covered with grass. Usable space, yeah.
If the drain is lowered six inches, does that affect, will there be a cover over that to?
Well, it's an existing.
So nobody gets caught in it?
Yeah, because it's, if you see where it is, it's in that low, it's kind of in that far corner, and it, we can, what you do is, it's not like you just lower it down, we can kind of gradually lower the grade to it so it's not an abrupt change, so I don't think it won't cause a safety concern, if that's a good question. But, yeah, we can, you know, handle that, still sump it down, but do it in a way that it's gradual and not too abrupt where somebody's going to injure themselves on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Are there any other comments from the members of the board? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate your effort and presentation, and yours as well. And the next item on the agenda is proposed ordinance amendments. Is there any number?
Should I?
Jamie, would you like to present on any of this?
Bit of a summary of what we are looking at, would that be okay? Okay. So the attached zoning.
You better, you want to come up, or you can do it from there if you prefer.
I'm good here, if you guys can hear me.
Okay.
I'll try to.
Just repeat your name and title.
Oh, Jamie Jelosi, Director of Community Development. Okay, so the attached zoning ordinance amendments are for sections 182-711, Building and Accessory Structure Regulations, and then 182-802, Nonconforming Uses, Buildings and Structures. Additionally, new definitions related to buildings and structures and lots are proposed to modernize the definitions or maintain consistency of the definition with the new provisions proposed. So for section 182-711, the provisions were revised to separately address accessory buildings, meaning garages and sheds versus accessory structures. Some accessory structures, such as pools and fences, are separately addressed in the supplemental regulations of the zoning ordinance. However, decks and patios and other accessory structures are not currently covered by the zoning provisions, and we have established much more clear regulations in the new subsections. In section 182-802, Nonconforming Uses, Buildings, Structures and Lots, we have separated those as well so that they may be addressed independently on a case-by-case basis per what the nonconformity is. The regulations for nonconforming uses remain the same, generally speaking, and the established regulations for nonconforming buildings and structures permit an enlargement as long as the nonconformity does not increase, and nonconforming lots are expressly permitted to be built upon as long as the area and bulk requirements of the district may be met. Lastly, any voluntary demolition of a nonconformity is considered abandonment and may not continue moving forward. So that sort of summarizes what we have. I know we can dive deeper into what your questions are, or comments are, or revisions maybe. Sure.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Planning Commission members?
I just had a couple points of clarification.
Sure.
So 182-711, A3, B3. So that's related to residential private garages. I see that this is in the existing ordinance, but it says there are no drain lines or water supply lines within the overhead area above the first story. So it looks like we took out the electrical so people could have electric on a second-floor garage, but does that, is that intended to just ensure that we don't have bathrooms on second-floor garages?
I believe so.
Essentially like, no?
I believe that was the intent, and we didn't see any reason to prohibit electric to that accessory building, but I think that the intent perhaps was originally to prevent any kind of a bathroom in them.
Yeah.
On the second story.
On the second story. So does this, I'm just wondering, since we're modifying it, does this language make sense, or should we say something other than within the overhead area above the first story? Because I'm pretty sure that no building code official would consider, like, I've never heard the reference to overhead area, because you run lines through in between the joists, right? So should we just come out and say what we mean? Or does this cause confusion in the enforcement or interpretation that you've experienced?
I don't know that it has in the past, because I haven't experienced it here, but if you would like to clarify that, we may.
I mean, it might just be helpful if we, if we mean, because if we're concerned about people turning these into ADUs, which I think is the concern here and what the protections are, because if we're not allowing second-floor space to be habitable and we're not allowing for water, then my assumption is that we're trying to restrict the conversion of garages into accessory dwelling units or apartments of some kind.
That's what I believe would have been the intent of the original language.
That's, I mean, that's the only thing that makes sense based on how this is worded. So if that's what our intent is, maybe we just say, because if we mean no water at all, like no sinks, then, or if we mean just no bathrooms, no full baths or half baths, maybe it just makes sense to say, like, you can't have drain lines, because if you, I guess it's just like, maybe semantics, because if you need to run water lines for whatever reason, if it's a slab-on-grade and you need to run water lines in the joist in the ceiling to service the first floor, this would prohibit that.
That's correct.
So I don't think that that's the intent. So I don't know that we should use the language where we prohibit water lines within the overhead area, and maybe we just say no.
To service the second story.
Like no plumbing to service the second-floor areas.
To service, yeah. I would just remove within the overhead area above the first story and replace with to service.
There are no.
To service.
Service the second.
Pile lines to service the second floor.
Yeah, yeah.
To service a second floor.
Yeah, that makes more sense to me.
Or second story.
I have a bigger problem with that section.
Okay.
What's that?
If you read the definition of private garage, you're only allowed to store passenger cars.
This is correct.
So what do you need a second floor for? People use their garages for storage, I mean, they don't use them to store their cars, basically. I mean, there's a big inconsistency with the definition and what we're saying, and the other thing is that the suggestion that you can't do these on the second floor implies that you can do it on the first floor.
You can.
So it's okay to have drainage bathroom in your garage where you're only supposed to have cars?
Well, technically, I think the definition has always regulated that.
I'm sorry, the definition?
The definition of a private garage has sought to regulate the use.
Right.
Right.
I guess.
So incorrectly or not, that's where the regulation lies.
I think our ordinance has to reflect the definition, we have to revise the definition so that it's consistent with the ordinance.
So do we want private garages, then? Do we want to look at changing the definition of a private garage to be less limiting, or do we want to keep it more limited?
That's what accessory structures are for, like sheds and things like that.
Right.
So if you want to store your lawnmower and all that stuff, we can't do it in the garage, you have to do it in a shed.
Doesn't, that doesn't really make sense, though, because sometimes people only have a garage, or people only have a shed.
I don't disagree, I'm just saying, something has to change.
Yeah.
And I didn't know that you could have a residential unit in a garage.
Well, I think what Jamie was saying is that the definition of a private garage.
Right.
If the use of this space can only be for storage of vehicles, then inherently, you cannot use it for anything else, even though this provision would insinuate that you can have a bathroom in your garage, so then the building permit would be inherently in conflict with the use definition of a garage, and so theoretically, the interpretation should have been based on the use. So building permits should not be issued for first-floor garages for things like bathrooms, because that doesn't comply with the use, but I don't know how it's historically actually been applied in the review process.
But again, going back to my point, if you only, if a garage can only store vehicles, why do you need a second floor?
Yeah, no, that's fair. I think, well, then in that case, I would recommend that we modify the definition for private garage, because I don't think that people use garages for just vehicles, and people need storage space, want storage space, for better for worse, so.
Yeah, I know, okay. I'm trying to reconcile this with my life experience. I'm accustomed to garages that have really steep pitched grooves, and then you have rafters or joists, and all kinds of stuff stored up there. That would, to me, technically be the second level, but I don't know how that feeds into this.
So if you look at a lot of the prefab structures these days, you can buy them that come with second floors, like either whole or partial second floors, like loft attic space, or like actually with stairs. So I think just the material products that people are purchasing these days and installing would almost necessitate a refreshment of the definitions to reflect how people actually use the spaces, because I think people would use them too for things like, you know, studio space, woodworking space, like hobby spaces.
Our home occupation does not permit any of, like, anything that would qualify as a home occupation to be outside of the dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
So it would have to be a hobby, woodworking.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Yes, that's a good.
Making that clear.
Right.
But it does then create a fine line of enforcement there.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because if somebody has like a painting hobby and then they sell their artwork on the side, is that a home occupation or not? I think, I think, Jamie, to your point, we would be looking more at, you know, more and more people are working from home, people are turning their garage spaces into like home offices, so this would, this would mean that they couldn't turn it, so this says that you can't have a second-story space that's habitable, but then would, that would seem to indicate that you could turn the first-floor space into habitable space, so you could theoretically turn it into like a home office, not a home occupation, but like a home office, but then the use of the garage structure is limited to just cars, so that would be in conflict there. So I guess my question to my other Planning Commission members is, if we were to change the definition of what constitutes a private garage, what do you see as being like a functionally useful definition and use limitations of that space? Because I personally don't think that we should limit it to just vehicles, but I think we raise very real concerns if we talk about finishing any of this space into habitable space, because then it becomes like a use creep where people start doing all sorts of things with it. So if we want to keep it as, you can have this structure and you can store vehicles, you can store lawn equipment, you can store, you know, toys and games and camping equipment and extra, you know, holiday decorations or whatever, I think those are personal uses that are acceptable with garages, but maybe we restructure this to say actually that none of the garage space can be converted to habitable space? Like you can't have HVAC, you can't, you can have electrical, but you can't have HVAC, you can't have plumbing in first or second floor, these have to just be storage structures exclusively?
I agree. I think that the definition of private garage, the easiest way around this is to change the definition to allow storage of those personal items that you mentioned, and we don't need to enumerate all of them.
Right.
But make it a general thing.
Okay.
Where you could say, as an example, basketball arcade, which happens to be how I use one of my garage bays.
Basketball arcade.
You know the little shooting thing?
Yes.
Sorry, I want to make sure that's legal.
Those are games of amusement, I don't know that that is acceptable in a garage.
So what I'm hearing, though, is revise the definition of private garage to allow for personal storage space, and revise section A3, B3, right, and 182-711 to not permit habitable space, basically, remove.
Yeah, so B1, we would say the zoning hearing board shall find that the proposed structure will not provide habitable space.
Space.
I have a question, though.
So get rid of second story, and then B3, we're saying there are no drain lines or water supply lines that service the second story, because I think that having a utility sink in a first floor of the garage is an acceptable use. If I had a garage, I don't, but if I did, I would put all of my gardening stuff in there and all my seed starts, and I want to be able to water them and things like that, so I think having a utility sink makes sense on a first floor, so I wouldn't want to limit that.
How would you handle someone who has a wood shop in their garage, who likes to work on projects kind of off and on?
Including air conditioning?
No, just he has a wood shop in his garage. It's a hobby.
Is it a hobby?
As a hobby.
I think it should be addressed.
As a hobby, that's permitted.
Yes. Well, the existing definition excludes businesses, services, or industry, so it can't be a business. Right. Can't be a service. It's a hobby, but it's a hobby.
And our home occupations are not permitted to be outside of the dwelling unit, so that's consistent.
Okay.
But a hobby would be permitted.
Yeah, so if somebody, you know, woodworking, or, you know, you buy a dresser off of Facebook Marketplace and you want to refinish it and stain it, repaint it, like, that would be, that would fall under whatever definition we're going to come up with, so storage space and like hobby space.
Yeah, good. Jamie, in terms of how we're going to proceed, we'll have our comments, there may be a lot more, there may be a few more, but in terms of drafting, perhaps the best thing would be to collect the comments, and then either you could come up with another draft, or we could come up with another draft, but it seems to me drafting by committee tonight would be difficult.
Correct, I will come up with another draft.
Sorry?
We'll come up with another draft.
Great. And if you'd like to consult with anybody on the Planning Commission, I'm sure people will be happy to help.
Okay.
That doesn't mean we can't discuss certain items tonight, right?
No, we should, because Jamie needs to know all our thoughts as much as possible.
Yeah, if we can get everything of your thoughts out tonight, then I can get a, basically a Planning Commission redline version to you.
That seems like a good procedure.
Okay.
I just had one other point of clarification, and I promise I won't wordsmith anymore. I just wanted to clarify, so under decks and patios, so on page four, for patios, unless otherwise specified in this chapter, patios may be located, erected, or maintained a minimum of five feet from any rear or side yard property as measured from the edges of any permanent surface. What is the permanent surface?
The patio.
The?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. As measured from the edges of any permanent surface.
We just didn't.
The permanent surface being the patio itself.
The patio itself, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever surface they use for a patio, whether it's pavers or permanent surface, meaning it'll catch any of the materials that are used, concrete, pavers. it'll catch any of the materials that are used, concrete, pavers.
I had the same question. I had the same question. Thank you.
House foundation? So for this one, so for a twin house, they, so they could have a deck, because we talked about this earlier, so decks can go up until the shared property line, but patios could not? Patios would still need to be set back five feet from a shared side property line?
Yeah, what is, what is the reason that that's being added?
Patios?
No provisions for patios.
Why, no, why the deck can go up to the property line?
Oh, on a, on, only on a, on a twin, like on a shared party line.
Right.
Because the the question has been, if a deck is entirely removed, it's been there for 25 years and it wants, somebody comes in and they want to replace it. The way that our non-conforming regulations are could dictate that when the entire deck is removed to be replaced because of decay, not anything else, that they then would have to meet their side yard setback and no longer would be able to. It's, it's just to clarify that when it is, so if it's, and this is in the instance when a twin is located in a district where twins are not permitted or attached structures are not permitted. So they're a non-conforming use.
Yep, but does it make sense that we say that a patio kit has to be five foot off a property line, but a deck can be up to the property line? It doesn't make sense to me. Plus, a deck that's built to the property line, you're kind of cutting off access between the front yard and the rear yard. I mean, from a safety standpoint, or, or let's say a tree falls in your backyard and you get a contractor back there, he's got to go over your deck to get back there? Or if someone gets hurt in your backyard, have this emergency.
You're only permitted to, to build the deck up to the property line if you're a semi-detached.
Yeah, well, the property line, it says, it doesn't say to the property line, it says the side yard setback shall not apply. A twin house only has one side yard.
Oh, no, okay, so Angela, I think what you're, what you're pointing out is, so I think this intent, so this here was to allow for decks to be built up into the party line.
That's not what it says.
But you're, but you're.
Unless that portion of the deck that is part of the semi-detached dwelling, so only the side that is part of the party line. It, that's the only one that the side yard shall not apply.
And that's the party line between the two attached houses?
So this would not allow decks to go to the other side.
How many side yards?
One at a time.
How many side yards are there on a twin property?
Two.
There's one.
Well, one on each side.
No, there's no property, there's no setback on the, on the common line.
Right.
Okay, so there's only one side yard setback.
For each unit.
Unit, yeah. And this says I can build, what's it say? The side yard setbacks shall not apply. So that means I can build up to the property line?
Well, I guess, how are, how are side yards defined for attached housing units?
Yep.
So, okay, so maybe so we don't wordsmith, maybe. Jamie, can you look into the definition of side yard setbacks then for twins to make sure that that language makes sense? Angela, do you agree though with the, with the premise that we can allow for decks to go?
To the party wall.
To the party wall?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so I think we're in agreement in terms of the functionality of that. But maybe let's clarify the language so that we don't inadvertently allow people to build a deck all the way to the other side of their property line.
I mean, I did look at that carefully. The reason behind that additional language specifically for a semi-detached dwelling was because of the instance where a semi-detached dwelling is a non-conforming use. And if the accessory structure was entirely removed, then they could not build back because of the side yard setback that's in that district.
No, but I think what we're saying is you can have a deck and you could even have the deck up to the property line with your adjoining neighbor. I think that's what we're saying. And then maybe your adjoining neighbor wants a deck as well, so you'll both have decks and they'll stretch across the back of the property.
Hold on, hold on.
But this would be a problem if you're a neighbor, maybe you don't want the deck of your neighbor, if you're the next property over, not an adjoining property, just a house next door. What this seems to say is either of those owners who happens to be abutting the neighbor's property can build their deck out to the property line. And the neighbor may not want the deck hanging over their, or at the right edge of their property.
The intention of the language is to clarify that only along the side or portion that is semi-detached, there would be no side yard setback that would be applied.
I know.
In, in any instance, whether it's a non-conforming use or not.
No, I see, I see this now. Okay, if I can, if I can help clarify. So, so we're saying that in districts where attached units are by right uses, there is no side setback line along the party line. So this is, so if you look at the first sentence, it says that decks may be located in such a manner that they do not encroach upon any required setbacks of the districts in which they're located. If there's no existing setbacks, then they're not encroaching within a setback and therefore they can come up to the property line. But what, but then the, the second part of that sentence, unless the portion of the deck is part of a semi-detached dwelling. And so we do have instances of non-conforming structures where we have semi-detached dwellings, so twins, that exist in a district that do have two side yard setback requirements, but the use itself is non-conforming. So it was built as there is a shared party line, but because they're non-conforming, the lot legally has two side yards. And we're saying that side yard then doesn't apply in this case because we want the property to continue to be treated as a twin with no setback along the shared property line.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But there's nothing in here that talks about non-conforming structures.
Correct.
So this, if we adopted it the way it's written, it would apply to the R five district, R six district, whichever district's allowed twin houses. There's only one side yard requirement in those districts, okay? And this says that I can build up, I don't need a side yard setback. So I think the wording can be changed to say that, that in this particular case, the, the deck can be constructed up to the party wall line and not saying anything about side yard.
I think that solves the problem. I think.
And that preserves the setback for twins, the side yard setback.
So again, I think what we're saying is it's okay to have no setback with your adjoining neighbor, but you should have a setback with respect to non-adjointing neighbors. Is that?
The others.
Sense? I had a question on patios, as long as we're in that spot. Is five, five feet seems pretty close to the neighboring non-adjointing, well, this is not about adjoining, this is any patio. Five feet seems close in some neighborhoods. Is that standard throughout the?
There are no current provisions for patios and they may be built up to the property line. This will be a significant change to have any provisions, so five feet was the suggested change.
Would it be better to say the same as whatever it is for setbacks?
So you would propose to keep it within the building envelope? That's an even greater change.
The building? Aren't you permitted now to have some
There's no provision.
Structure on the land that goes closer to your neighbor but isn't, closer than your building, but doesn't go right up to the property line? There's nothing in the code that says that?
I'm not sure what you're referring.
If you, if you put an addition on your house or build, you have to say within the building envelope? The building envelope is defined by the setbacks?
So let's say the setback is eight feet, for instance. Is that pretty normal?
Yeah, I mean, we have setbacks of six feet, I think, in some districts.
Okay, let's, whatever, six, eight.
You could build a, a two-story house up to that point. So this is just saying that patios can be five feet from any property line. Because right now, if you were, if your house currently fills your entire building envelope, then you wouldn't be under the provision that you're recommending, then they wouldn't be allowed to put any patios at all to encroach within any setback areas, which would be very limiting considering that there's currently no provisions at all about mandated setbacks for patios. So this, this I think is helpful because this is going to allow people to build patios anywhere in their yard that they want to build a patio, but giving a little bit of a buffer so that the patio doesn't come right up into a property line. So that they're not just like building a patio right on top of their neighbor's patio. It gives a little bit of separation. Because if you want to put a patio in a fire pit in your yard, then you have at least five feet then from your neighbor's property line.
Plus it's consistent with the setback for detached garages.
Correct, yeah, so it matches the other setback.
Yeah, but it's different for patios because that's where people have parties and make noise and run around.
Well, right now they can go up to the property line.
Yeah, I know.
So this is actually creating.
An improvement, but you could have your patios in the back and say the rear property lines, not so much the side.
It's side and rear.
I'm saying you could limit it to rear. Just a thought, I'm not, I'm interested in the comments of the others with their houses and how much they feel they would like the separation from their neighbor's patio. I have nice neighbors, I'm, it's not a problem, but sometimes, some people have not nice neighbors who are very noisy.
If we restricted patios and side yards, I would not have a, I would not be able to have a patio in my yard.
I wouldn't want that.
So I think that there's a number of houses that, because of orientation, that it's, that it's unnecessary for us to limit inside yards.
We'd also be creating so many non-conformities.
Yeah, my house would be non-conforming and then I couldn't do anything on my patio at all.
So does everybody feel five feet is reasonable? Isn't this fair? Seems fair?
I think, yeah, I think it's good.
I'm okay with it. I was just raising the question. It seemed a little close to me, but doesn't change the building or the garage, so.
If we can go to the definition of building coverage?
Before you get there, there's that, other accessory structures. There's not others, I got it right there. So these accessory structures are limited and can't be located in front of the primary or principal structure on the lot? Could you just explain that? Is that meant like not to include statues or?
They're, they're not meant to be in the front yard.
Would refer to in my mind like a carport that somebody would want to put in front of their house?
A patio?
A shed.
A porch. A flagpole.
Well, would it exclude, would it bar flagpoles?
Yeah.
Yeah. Would it bar?
It doesn't prevent the patio or the porch.
I, I, my, my comment was that maybe that section, we should add a couple of examples what we mean by other accessory structures.
And these are affixed or not affixed, correct, to the land? Okay with me.
Wait, Jamie, does, do we have secondary regulations for fences? Because
Yeah.
The definition for accessory structure includes fences.
We do.
And fences, and fences under this are prohibited in the front yard.
There's a whole section on fences.
We do have an entire section on fences.
Are fences allowed in the front yard?
No.
Any, what about walls? Like stone walls?
Only if they're under 30 inches.
Under 30 inches.
All right, in height?
In height, yeah.
I'm trying to think, because I have a stone wall that's been there since my house was built 140 years ago, that I think is higher.
Don't tear it down.
It's beautiful. I would love to keep it, but I'm afraid if it ever gets hit by a car, I wouldn't be able to rebuild it.
So the, the other accessory structures is to be able to regulate certain decorative structures or other accessory structures ending up in the front yard.
A little guy with a lantern?
I, I mean, I don't know that that qualifies as something we would regulate. But like a garden trellis in the front yard might not be something we want to have there.
I'm actually not sure that I agree with limiting decorative trellises as part of landscaping features like that. There's, I mean, like a full-on gazebo, maybe that could be limited, but, but something like a pergola or a trellis that's part of a landscaping feature, I feel like those are, those should be fine in front yards. So I, I, I would be opposed to wholly restricting those types of features. Okay.
Restricting or not restricting the gazebo's and, and trellises and?
Neighborhood outside the township where people have what I'll call antique farming implements in their front yard? Is that something that's allowed in this township?
So currently, the way that accessory structures are, the way that accessory structures are treated is that they are sort of only lumped into section B one and mentioned where it says no private garage or other accessory structure. So we really, we really don't have provisions for accessory structures per se in the code currently. So in, in seeing that, we attempted to kind of capture accessory structures and provide some sort of regulations for those that aren't already captured, which fences and walls are captured in supplementary, supplemental and also swimming pools and recreational, so your tennis courts and basketball courts and such are already captured in supplemental. But things like decks and patios and maybe anything else that could fall, just anything else, right, that would be an accessory structure are not, we don't have provisions for. And in seeing that, we try to provide them.
Let me see if I understand clearly. So items that aren't attached to the ground or attached to a building will come within this?
So the definition of accessory structure, we've added, any building or other structure that is related to an accessory use and is located on the same lot as a principal permitted use, such as, but not limited to sheds, fencing, walls, tennis courts, basketball courts, swimming pools, pavements, and other stationary man-made structures.
Added, stationary is the lynchpin.
You can have them, but you can't encroach on setbacks and you can't put them in the front yard. Sum it up?
That sums it up.
And the suggestion is that there be some flexibility for pretty stand, for common sense, which is not a good word, but for pretty common or standard garden features, like a trellis. But
So.
May, may, well, we would think about, maybe we should think about whether that can be written in in some way or, or can't.
Okay.
And we just have to leave it up to common sense.
Okay.
Anybody have any thoughts on that or should we move on? On common sense versus trying to write regulation that permits trellises and the like? On common sense versus trying to write regulation that permits trellises and the like? Well, let's give that some thought and get back to Jamie if we have any thoughts on Next item?
Oh.
Definitions, if you have back there?
Just a minor thing, on, on the first whereat, is there a, is it, Haverford Township a first-class township? The second line under the first whereas?
Yeah, I see that.
There is a first-class township code, isn't there? Okay. And township is first class, right?
Yes.
Okay.
First-class township code.
So my first question about definitions is under building. Historically, Haverford Township has always, always considered decks as part of building Which I, I don't know if that makes sense or not, because the definition of building says that it has to have enclosed walls and a roof. And most decks don't have enclosed walls and a roof. So I think, and again, that's, that's based historically on what the township has done in the past. Chuck, am I right on that?
Yes, you are, Angel.
Okay. So I think we need to modify something to address decks as far as whether it's building coverage or impervious coverage. And I think the easiest way to do that is to add decks under impervious coverage, but only that portion of a open deck that's in excess of some number, say two hundred square feet or something like that, so that if you want to put a deck on your property, you're not paying the paper for stormer management, all that stuff that kicks in when you add impervious. So you're basically allowing a certain amount of deck to be built without incurring additional costs. And what that number is, you know, it can be two hundred square feet, it can be one hundred fifty or two hundred and forty, whatever number we think is reasonable. Two hundred and forty square feet would be a deck that's twenty feet long and twelve feet deep.
You're talking about a deck that's on the ground?
No. A deck, to me, a deck is raised. I don't see many wooden decks that are on the ground, like, most of them are
Supported by the ground.
Right. They're, they're raised a couple feet. Usually patios are flush with the ground as opposed to decks. So I think, I think either we have to add decks into the definition of building, or we have to modify the definition of impervious coverage to cover decks, real large decks.
I got you.
Or we can not consider them, consider them impervious at all, we have that option too. The theory being water's going to drip through the cracks in the wood into the ground surface underneath the deck.
I can just say from personal experience, the township where I work lists decks as impervious cover, and I spend more hours of my day arguing with people that they count as impervious cover than, than not. I mean, I literally, like, an hour of my day every single day is spent arguing with contractors because I've flagged building permits for impervious cover and denied deck permits based on impervious coverage. And it's, it's a decision that really needs to be carefully considered because of its impact on the administrative processing of the department.
Right.
Because that, that will cause lots of consternation. And most people will make that exact argument that the decks are raised, it's gravel or grass underneath of it, it's pervious surface, water goes through the slats. The argument against it is that people will put hot tubs and, you know, furniture and other stuff on top of the deck, which will impact the sheet flow of water. So there's, there's practical considerations for that. So I just don't want to jump into making more of a change to the zoning ordinance or the stormwater ordinance without considering what the implications of that would be.
Well, I mean, you can make the same argument by saying it's building, it's a building.
Well, if decks are already considered part of the building, are they not inherently then considered part of the impervious cover?
The township, the township regulate, currently, they say it's, it counts as building coverage, but it doesn't count as impervious coverage.
Okay. Yeah, I would hesitate on taking the leap at this juncture when we're looking at the zoning ordinance to jump into the stormwater management ordinance to modify how decks are perceived as pervious or impervious, because again, that's going to make.
The, the definition of impervious coverage is a surface that is not absorbed water, and it lists several examples in addition, other areas determined by the township engineer to be impervious. So Chuck, is a deck pervious or impervious?
Personally, I think a deck is impervious, but you're right in your interpretation of what the township does.
So I, I think including it as impervious and giving an allowance is a fair way to address the runoff that's created by decks. You're not hurting the common person by giving them an allowance to build a deck in the same respect, you're trying to respect the, the stormwater management runoff criteria. Again, just, just an idea, but I thi, I think since we're going to this trouble of revising these definitions, we ought to make sure we're consistent with how we actually think, or how we want to change them.
Decks have been considered part of the building coverage, but are not subject to the setbacks of a primary structure?
Oh, they are.
So we're changing this then to allow them to have, so we're separating them out because they still can't encroach
Right.
On setbacks. But this change would take them out of the building coverage definition?
Well, they're not in the builder's, building coverage definition. It's, it's something the township has decided that's the way we're going to do it.
Okay, so it's more of just a policy that
Right.
Decks count as
Right.
Building coverage. I would be curious to know if that has been limiting to applicants the maximum building coverage to put a deck? Like, I would just be interested in understanding how many people have been denied decks because they exceed their building coverage, and if that's a problem, or if we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. You don't have to answer that, I'm just posing it as a question.
I don't, I don't have that data.
Because I, I hesitate including decks. I mean, if we're going to be counting it as building coverage, but it's not counted impervious coverage, but if we start then imposing this limitation to say that you can have, you know, it counts as impervious cover when a deck exceeds two hundred and fifty square feet, how many, how many people are applying for decks that are greater than that number?
Probably not many. That's a pretty big debt.
Yeah. I don't know.
I mean, you can make it three hundred, I mean, it's, it's a number that basically allows you not to go through those nuisance applications to the zoning hearing board.
Right.
But if the deck becomes real big, then you could have a problem with building coverage too.
Right.
All right, here's the
I've seen decks that are bricked in, I mean, they're, you can't have decks that don't provide any, any real drainage.
The, the other question becomes, and I, I ran into this problem in Radnor, an underground garage. It's buried in the ground, and it's got a green roof or vegetated roof on top, so is that considered a building? It meets the definition, it has a roof, it's got, it's closed by walls, but you don't see it.
Maybe we leave those one-off ones
I don't think that's, there's much of a possibility of someone building an underground
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that that's
Garage in the township.
So much of a demand in the township that we would have to specifically, specifically regulate that.
Yeah, well, fallout shelters? Um, under building coverage, it, it talks about the footprint of a building or structure. So I think we have to strike for structure. The reason being that if you look at the definition of structure, it's anything made by humans. So that would include driveways, patio, sidewalk, anything else that's impervious. Certainly not a building, because it doesn't meet the definition of building. A building is a structure, but a structure doesn't necessarily have to be a building.
Right.
I agree.
Somebody's asking clarification.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Could you explain a little more what you were, what you were saying about building or structure being a problem?
Well, it says building coverage is a footprint of a building or structure. And a driveway is a structure, but it's not a building. So it shouldn't be part of the building definition.
Yeah, that makes sense, because the purpose of building coverage is to regulate the number and size of the actual three-dimensional structures, and then we have impervious cover limits to cover the impervious cover, which would, driveways would be included in that.
Right.
So I think, I think that makes sense to me.
So we're deleting, or we're recommending deleting or structure?
Or structures, yes. I got a ton of these. Under non-conforming building, okay, it, the wording is a building that's not, that does not currently comply with the applicable use provisions. A, a, a non-conforming building has nothing to do with use, correct? It's the building that we're talking about. It's not the use in the building. Well, we have definition for non-conforming use also. It's not in here, but it's in the, it's in the book. You can have a conforming use in a non-conforming building.
That's correct.
And vice versa.
And, and you can also have a non-conforming use in a conforming building.
True. So what this definition is for non-conforming building, a non-conforming building, the structure, the building, is one that doesn't meet the bulk and area requirements of the zoning ordinance. Not in the definitions, but on it.
So you're, Angela, you're saying the building that does not currently comply with the applicable use provisions, you don't think it should say use provisions?
I don't, I don't, I think you can take out that whole sentence up to the next part where it says that's not comply with the area and bulk requirements. So a building that's, that does not comply with the area and bulk requirements of this chapter or any amendment thereto, such building lawfully existed prior to the enactment of this chapter or amendment.
And could you suggest what area and bulk means in the practice?
I don't
That's, that's common language that
Yeah.
No one ever defines, it's the actual massing of the building.
So if it wouldn't, the structure, the building would not?
A non-conforming building, you're talking about the building.
And not the setbacks, for example?
You are. A non-conforming building is a building that doesn't meet the setback requirement.
But setbacks would not be area and bulk?
Yeah. Well, that's what area and bulk requirements are, they're
It would include setback?
Yeah.
Area and bulk is, is what all zoning is, so it's the, it's the setbacks, it's the lot size, it's the, it's the, yeah, height limits, it's all the massing and location regulations that zoning inherently regulates.
Shouldn't the area and bulk regulations be defined somehow to someone who's not familiar with what that means?
No.
Why not? Why? I mean, you read that area and bulk regulations?
That's what zoning is.
In chapter, it says area and bulk requirement. But what does it mean?
It means everything that falls under that boundary.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we state?
Well, it's, you know, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
No, it's absolutely, it's absolutely unnecessary.
Explain, because it's
Because it's, because it's artic, it's because it's articulated in the municipalities planning code as the basis, the foundational basis
Size, reference.
That regulates zoning. So the enabling legislation of the state of Pennsylvania that allows municipalities
Shouldn't all that be somehow referred to what you're saying?
Yes, it is. The zoning, the zoning ordinance is
In this, in this document?
It does not need to be referred to in our specific zoning ordinance.
Not specifically, generally state where to find what area and bulk regulations mean.
Area and bulk regulations literally is what the zoning code regulates. It is inherent in the zoning regulations unto themselves.
It says area and bulk requirements of this chapter. So it's
The chapter is zoning. If you look at the, if you look at the intent
It's in here.
The, the intent?
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, under setback, the distance from the lot line to the point where a building I think
Excuse me, before you, we use the word applicable provisions of this chapter for non-conforming structures, but just say area and bulk requirements of this chapter. And your feeling is that's sufficient? That it shouldn't say the applicable sections of this chapter? But you think area and bulk is an umbrella that includes everything? Okay.
Uh, setback?
It doesn't say that for structures. Whatever.
The distance from the lot line to the point where a building or structure may be constructed?
Setback.
Yeah, I mean, if we're making, if we're making a distinction between structure and building, then, yeah.
Okay. I, I think if, if we do that, then under structure, we have to add exclusion to include driveways, walkways, steps, and similar structures as determined by the zoning officer. But certainly, a driveway can't meet setback requirements, nor can walkways to your front door, or steps at your front door.
Fences.
You're saying they cannot meet setbacks?
No. How can a driveway meet a front yard setback?
I'm not sure I'm following why they need to.
Excuse me?
What, like if it's specifying that the setback is for the building and not a
No, it says a structure, I mean, there are certain structures that have to be within the setback.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, hold on, going back to your proposed correction to setback, so
Who that?
Structures, structures are referencing the building setback, so the building setback is the building setback, and structures are limited to what the building setbacks are. So structures don't have setbacks unto themselves, so we don't actually want to include, because it's a, it's a cross-reference. So if the definition of setback is for buildings, then when we go into the setbacks for other types of structures, they specifically reference which setbacks apply to structures.
Okay.
I, I don't quite follow, I think structures is defined as the broadest possible object made by humans, which includes buildings.
No, but here we're defining buildings separately from structures, so buildings are buildings.
No, not separately, it's a subcategory of structures. That's one problem I have with all of this, is I don't quite understand the separation of buildings and structures, unless it's spelled out that this is apart from structures, because all buildings are structures.
Right.
But not all structures are buildings.
But not all structures are buildings.
Certain structures have to meet the building setback requirements. And the structures that don't have to meet the building setback requirements, we specify what those setbacks are. But there are structures that do have to meet that setback requirement, a deck being one of them.
Correct. And that's specifically articulated, so that it has to meet the setbacks.
Right.
And then for those structures that don't have to meet setbacks, we're saying that. So going back to where we're talking about how. So we're specifically calling out things like patios. Patios are a structure, but they're not, they don't have to comply with the setbacks for their district. Their setback is separately defined now as five feet.
But the definition stays the same. In fact, you could just change buildings to structures.
No.
No?
You have to, either you don't put structure in there, or, yeah, you leave it the way it is, or you put structure in there. So if everyone's comfortable, see, what you have to do is look at setback in relationship to the definition of yard. The ordinance goes into detail about what the definition for yard, and it talks about front yard, side yard, and rear yard. "The yard is a required open unoccupied space on the same lot of a building or were provided for in this chapter, a group or complex of buildings on a lot, which open space is unoccupied and uninstructed by any portion of a structure from the ground upward, except for projections permitted in 182-712." So a setback in the yard, to me, are basically the same thing. So they should be consistent in their definition. And if we include structure in the definition of setback, then we have to list exclusions for obvious things that don't have to meet the setback.
Couldn't we just say, "Except as otherwise provided" in the code? Or we really don't have to say it, because we're saying they have to comply with setback requirements, and then you look at the setback requirements for the specific things.
Well, suppose, I mean, there are no setback requirements for driveway, except for two yard setback, two yard, two foot side yard setback.
Would we avoid this altogether if the setback, if the definition for setback simply referred to?
Yard?
Building envelope, or yard, like required yards? So we don't.
That's, what I thought we should do is, in parentheses at the end of theirs, say yard, say the definition of yard.
Sorry, I don't mean to throw another wrench in this, but I'm just looking at this. Building coverage includes.
Back in the definition still?
Still in definitions. Building coverage, the footprint of a building or structure. If we're saying structure.
So we just talked about striking that, or structure. Was everybody in agreement on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did say that. Yep.
I'm not trying to interrupt you, Maggie.
No, please, thank you for saving me from myself.
It's good to raise these things. Could we take a short break? Would that be okay with everyone?
Let me say one thing. In all the ordinances I've seen, building, structure, building setbacks, no matter which ordinance you read, you can always find a glitch in them, okay? Because it's hard to define everything that you're coming across, okay? So I think we just give this our best shot in reference to what we expect is going to happen. And knowing that at some point, hopefully in the near future, we're going to rewrite this whole thing anyhow.
I was about to say the same thing.
We're putting Band-Aids on things that we know are going to change.
Well, I.
Question is, near future.
Yeah.
I would then recommend, we've kind of gone around this a little bit, it might be helpful to see a revision and then digest a little bit more based on the conversation. So I don't know that I actually would say that we should take a break. I think that we should maybe just close the discussion at this point, unless anybody has any other.
I have others. Others may have others. I'd like to take a break.
I got a ton of them.
Angelo has a ton.
To bring up, too.
Who has a ton?
Let Rob, I'll be quick.
Can we just take the break?
Let's take a break.
Five minutes or less?
Three minutes.
Meeting's resumed. We can turn to comments on the non-conforming use proposed amendments. Anybody want to start that? I can start, if you want to.
All right, just under non-conforming buildings. Paragraph A says, "The enlargement or alteration does not increase the nonconformity of the building with respect to the height, setback, yard, or coverage requirements of the district in which it's located." And B says, "The enlargement or alteration complies with the area and bulk regulations of the district." Don't A and B basically say the same thing? Okay. Maybe we don't need both, and the same would apply to non-conforming structures. A and B are basically, repeat the same thing. So I think in the past, and I'm looking at the recent decisions the zoning board made with the property on Eagle Road, the old Lamp lighter Tavern, and Miller Roofing, they enlarged a non-conforming building, but the enlargement had to comply with the building setback requirements. So even though the building, say, had a, existing building had a five-foot side yard setback, the second story, which they added, had to comply with, say, the 10-foot setback. So they had to step the addition back in to comply with the Balkan area requirements for the particular zoning district. So.
You're in favor of just keeping two?
What's that? I'm sorry.
You're in favor of keeping two, like.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, one makes more sense, and I think B probably is more inclusive than A. B is more inclusive than A, in my opinion.
Okay.
Two. Two is more inclusive than one?
No.
Are they different on here? Does coverage requirement, which would remain in?
Yes.
And does that include impervious surface?
Area and bulk include impervious surface, building coverage, setbacks.
But not height?
Yeah, that's a Balkan area requirement also.
Okay. The, in that same section, you get to non-conforming lot. And it says, "A building may be constructed on any lot which was lawful when created," that being the lot, "and was in separate ownership." So I'm not, I don't quite understand what that is trying to accomplish.
I'll give you an example. Over in Penfield, when those lots were created over in Penfield, I'm talking about, Pattermill Lane and that section off of Manoa Road. The zoning at that time was, let's say, C5, okay? Or C, or some, it was a letter, not a number. And the lot area requirement at that time was like 5,500 square feet.
Okay.
So when the township redid their zoning ordinance back in the 70s, they reclassified that area to R4, with a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet. So there are some lots in that development that, when they were created, were legal, but now they're non-conforming because the township changed the ordinance, changed the area requirement.
Let me try it. If somebody buys a piece of land, three acres, let's say, and they're permitted to have a house on the three acres, and then, or the other way around, they have a, they're permitted to have a house, and then the lot area changes to make it unlawful to have that house, because it's too small a lot. And this says, you can still build on that property.
Right.
They can't take away the lot that you had bought under.
If it's held under separate ownership duly regarded by plan as a separate parcel, then yes, it's a non-conforming lot of record.
And the building still has to comply with area and bulk requirements?
For that district, correct?
Yeah, so it's essentially trying also to, if you have two lots that are owned by the same person side by side, then they would need to bring those, like essentially merge the lots to bring them into conformance, but if they're separate, then, separate ownership, then you can build on a non-conforming lot, provided you meet the other area and bulk requirements, as noted.
Okay, so changing the lot dimensions can't take away your right to have a house, for instance?
Right. So essentially, like, if you have the means to bring a lot, if you own multiple lots in a row, and you have a means to bring them into conformance, then you bring them into conformance, right? If you cannot, because you own just one parcel, and someone different owns another parcel, and someone different owns another parcel, unless they sell you those lots, in which case you can consolidate them to create a conforming parcel, this just allows you to build on a lot. So we're not going to take away your right to develop on a lot if the lot is non-conforming. But if you have the means to create a conforming lot, because you own multiple properties side by side, then you would have to bring them into conformance.
If you look at Brookline section, Beechwood section, all those lots in that, in those sections, in those neighborhoods, are 25 feet wide. Most people own two lots, which is 50 feet. But there are, in those neighborhoods, there are examples of people, there are twin homes in those neighborhoods, built on 25-foot lots. At the time of the subdivision, 25-foot lot was legal. Actually, those plans predate the township zoning laws. So there's houses in Brookline and in Beechwood that are twins, that only have 25-foot frontage. There's some houses in Brookline that are, our lots are 37 and a half feet wide, which are lot and a half, and they have a shared driveway. So all those lots that were created, if they weren't combined in some fashion over the years, and they're held in separate ownership, then they're legal, non-conforming lots.
I found the definition of, did you have, did you have any?
When I read this, I thought it was kind of interesting in that, I'm looking at page six, D, Change in Use, Part Three, the last sentence, I'm going to read it, it says, "No structural alterations are made other than those ordered by an authorized public officer to assure the safety of the building or structure." And my question is, is an authorized public officer qualified to determine the safety of the building or the structure? What I'm saying is, I think the owner should provide the services of a design professional, such as a structural engineer, to make that decision, not a public officer.
So, Rob, to my understanding, building code officials do have the legal authority to condemn buildings if they are unsafe. And I would interpret this to read as that. That if the building code official that is employed by or appointed by the township observes a building that needs to be condemned, or a structure that needs to be condemned, because he goes out and sees that it's not meeting building code requirements, and poses an imminent threat to public health, safety, and welfare, that person has the authority to.
Code is different than actual structural conditions of a building? I mean, I know there's building codes.
Yes.
There's also structural, it specifically states, "Assuring the safety of the building or structure." And when I read it, a red flag went up, in that I'm thinking, who's responsible for that structure? And it's not an authorized public officer. I think the public officer says, you know, you have to make these repairs, get a structural engineer to tell you what has to be done. I don't think the authorized public officer is telling you how to do it, they're telling you it has to be done. And you have 30 days to correct the situation, or we're going to shut you down, or whatever they do. Okay. If it's interpreted that way.
Yeah, because I read this as, because we're talking about a change in use.
Right.
So I'm just thinking of an example where perhaps you're going from one type of non-residential use to another type of non-residential use. And depending on the type of use, and depending on the building itself, there's various classifications in the UCC that would require certain safety improvements, things like, I'm just trying to think, like sprinklers, or ADA, or other major life safety things, that this is saying, a building, if you're changing a use in a non-conforming building, you're not supposed to be then modifying that non-conforming building structurally to enable that change of use. That change of use should occur within the existing structure. But if that change of use, as authorized by the zoning hearing board, then requires some other sort of alteration to the building itself, I guess in order to make that use comply with public safety, then that would be something that the township could say, that that would be a requirement in order for that use to occur within that building. So the zoning hearing board doesn't have the authorization to say that they can make structural changes, but a building code official could.
I didn't realize that he had that authority, or the knowledge to see that in a building.
Yeah, so depending on the type of use.
Is this just for residential?
Well, I see this as applying more to non-residential.
Okay. Yep.
I just have a problem with this entire concept. A non-conforming use, as I understand it, is something that was lawful at one time, a use that was lawful at one time, and then there's a change in the zoning ordinance, which renders that use unlawful. And the person who had, the owner, that had the lawful, now unlawful use, has a constitutional right, not a zoning right, a constitutional right to continue its property right, which was to continue its now non-conforming use, even though it's not lawful. That's it. That's all that you have a right to do, is continue the non-conforming use. And it's the policy of the township, stated in sections of the code, that we don't, that aren't being changed, to lawfully gradually eliminate non-conforming uses, which have been problems in a lot of neighborhoods. So I would delete, my proposal is, in D1, Change in Use, say what we mean, which is a non-conforming use shall not be changed to any other use other than a conforming use, period. Delete, except as otherwise permitted, in section D3 below. Delete except as otherwise permitted in section D three below. Next sentence is okay. If a non-conforming use is discontinued or changed to a conforming use, any future use of such building, structure or portion thereof shall conform with the regulations of this chapter, which would include structural alterations and anything else. So that would all be covered by existing regulations. Sub two is redundant. I don't think we need that. That's part of what a non-conforming use is. If you change the district, the existing non-conforming use in such district may be continued. That's already here. It doesn't add anything. And I always, in drafting, I don't like redundancies because someone could say, well, you meant, you wouldn't have put it in if it was just redundant, maybe you meant something different. And people try to argue that. So I would take that out as redundant. And then I would take out three entirely. I see no useful function of three. If somebody wants to put in a new use and it isn't in conformity with current zoning, there are ways of doing that. And what, I don't, this is a special right that's being granted to owners with non-conforming uses that I don't think anyone else, that they don't have a right to. And I don't think any other owner has a right to, to do that. So second, also in that paragraph, the term same classification is problematic. And lastly, this is one of the, the only one that I could find where the zoning hearing board could make, could approve something with no criteria. And I don't think that's permitted under the municipality's planning code. So for all the above reasons, I would just strike paragraph three. I don't think it adds anything, and I think it's just dangerous to have zoning be changed via the special exception approach. And again, it's not a right of, there's no right to, when you have a non-conforming use, to change it to some other use. And I think the law is pretty clear on that. Other than a conforming use.
I'd like to ask Jamie if she could just briefly indicate what the thrust was intended here.
Oh, this is all existing language. I haven't touched that. That's not, I didn't revise anything there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just felt as long as we're revising, I, I would be, I've never liked the provision and I'd rather not wait for the overall revision of the code. As long as we're looking at the specific changes now, I, I would be uncomfortable approving it as is. And I've tried to find out several years back, why this was in there. And I've never been able to get an answer from anybody who remembers.
So David, I would suspect that there's some sort of case law in the state Supreme Court or some other, some other level of state court where this came up and where this is, this is permitted under case law to allow for the transition of a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. It is authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board. If the concern is that the, there's no specific criteria by which the zoning hearing board would adjudicate a matter of a non-conforming use to a non-conforming use request, then maybe that's something that we could recommend specifying. Typically for something like that, really what you're concerned about with non-conforming uses are the detrimental impacts on the community. So, you know, in terms of light, noise, parking, traffic circulation, those are the types of things that people are concerned about when we're talking non-conforming uses for the most part. And typically, you know, if you're thinking of, of our neighborhood, the Brenford neighborhood, we have lots of like commercial garages. You know, so if, if a commercial garage in our neighborhood was changed to, well, I actually just think about the one that's on Penn Street. There used to be like a saxophone teacher and now it's an interior design store.
Or the awning store.
Or the awning store.
Railroad.
Yeah, so if the awning store was turned into
It's not a store, it's like a factory.
So if they, if they went from an awning store to, I don't know, some other type of non-conforming use, you know, the, the neighbors would be concerned about the impact. So, so any sort of special exception criteria would, would want to be focused on the actual impacts to the community. But I think that, I don't think that there is legal support for us to strike this entirely. I think that we would, we would fall under some sort of less because then we wouldn't, then we wouldn't allow for folks to, because you can't, you can't do anything that would be considered a taking. So I think this clause really falls under the takings, if you want to talk about constitutional rights. If you eliminate any possibility from somebody to make financial use of a property, and if the constraints of the non-conforming use are so egregious that there's no way that they can come into a conforming use, then whatever dissolution of the original non-conforming use there might be, with no possibility of coming into conformance for whatever reason, then that would be a taking if the municipality does not allow for the reasonable transition of a use of a property in order to maintain it as a viable property. So I think that constitutionally, that would be considered a taking and we're not permitted to eliminate that, that reuse potential. So I think that we have to leave this in, but I think the only recommendation then might be to come up with specific special criteria standard, special exception criteria standards for this type of thing. I don't, I would, I would need to take a look through the actual ZHB docket to see if this has actually ever come up in the past twenty years. I'm not sure if it has.
Or you don't know of any cases where they said, yeah, a non-con, a person with a non-conforming use has a right to change it to another non-conforming use, not by variance, not by conditional
This is all pre-existing, so this has been permitted by special exception for
No.
Overlong.
Well, whatever, but
I mean, this only kicks in if the use district is changed.
Yes.
So if, if there's no changes in the zoning ordinance as far as districts, number three doesn't apply.
And if there is a change in the use district, then, well, let me finish. If this, if there is a change in the use district, the non-conforming use can continue. There's no taking of property. It continues. And this says it can be changed to some other, that, that factory that makes awnings can become another factory that is not an awning factory.
Right, and supposedly
The law, the law that I've read is extremely clear, well, nothing's clear, reasonably clear, that a non-conforming use, there is no right to change a non-conforming use to another use.
Not by right, but this is, this is allowing it by special exception. So if the zoning hearing board doesn't feel that the, that the change is legitimate, then they can deny the special exception and that person would be forced to then continue the non-conforming use or convert it to a conforming use. Or for whatever reason they can't do either, then they're going to sue the township and then we'll deal with it then.
No, if they don't, if they can't use it for something else, then they can, if they, there are provisions in the law that permit other uses by variance, by conditional use. And I'd prefer also by changing the district. And I think it's much better if this goes to our elected representatives on the Board of Commissioners than goes to a zoning hearing board as a special exception, which allows a lot of flexibility to the unelected zoning hearing board. You're really changing the zoning of that district.
I disagree.
Well
I disagree. I think
Well, you show me a case that says they have a right.
I think that the elected official, no, I just, I disagree that the elected official should be the one to, to handle this. I don't think it should go before, as a conditional use. The, the purpose of having the separation of essentially the, the judicial body is the zoning hearing board. They're appointed by the commissioners in order to make decisions related to matters of zoning. So I think that that needs to stay within the authority of the zoning hearing board.
Except for conditional uses, which are also in the code.
But conditional uses go before the governing body and I don't think the governing body should be adjudicating matters of zoning.
They do every time it's a conditional use application. That's what the code says.
But that's not zoning, that's for
No, that is zoning. That's in the zoning code. There, throughout the code, there's provisions for conditional uses.
I saw
I don't get it.
Authority.
Well, the, I don't see the need for it. There's no right to it. I, I think it's fine to just say you can't change it to another use. If you want another use, get a variance, get a conditional use in there. Change the district. Or better yet, use your property if it's residential, put residences in it. I don't like giving the, there's always been problems in the zoning, what, what really happens is the zoning hearing board tends to encroach upon the authority of our elected representatives to zone a district. And that's what this would permit.
The use district can only be changed by the Board of Commissioners. They can't be changed by the zoning hearing board.
Correct.
And what do you have, what about in the case where suppose the non-conforming use is a vape shop and they want to change to a candy store? Is that something that they can't do? You want to deny them that opportunity in the event that the zoning district is changed?
If it's an existing non-conforming use.
Yes.
They can argue that they have a continuing right to have a vape shop. If the township has arguments to the contrary.
You're missing my point. Suppose the people who, the vape shop moves out and someone else wants to come in there and do something different.
It's like any other non-conforming use. They can continue the non-conforming use.
But suppose they don't want to do, they don't want to do a vape shop. They want to do something else.
They give up that use?
So, so there's no recourse.
If it's a commercial and they can have a, a store with other uses or sell tobacco, they can do it. That's, it's just like any other non-conforming use or any other use of property. There's no reason that I can see to have special exceptions that, as I say, to me usurp the function of zoning. I'm getting broader than
You can always change that to conditional use by the Board of Commissioners.
That would be better. I, I still don't see the need for that. I, I, but that's okay. That would be better.
I just feel that that would open us up to a takings challenge because if in the event, so to Angelo's, if you have a vape shop and they don't want to do a vape shop anymore, and they want to, they want to change it to another potentially less intensive use, potentially more intensive use, but another use in order to maintain the, the use of that existing structure. So if the structure has been used historically for a non-residential use and it's in a residential district, and it, the only other use of the property would be as a conforming use would be residential, the, the burden to transition that structure into a residential use, given the building code requirements that that would entail, would, would be onerous and they would claim a takings.
That's an existing law. That concept is an existing law, at least in variances and on some conditional uses. It's, that's, that's part of the law. You can't deny somebody the right to use their property. Making more money is not a basis for a variant, but the law is already clear that you can, or reasonably clear. It's, nothing's that clear in the Pennsylvania law of zoning. But the law is pretty clear that you can, the township can't prevent reasonable uses of the property. So if there's other reasonable uses and they, they don't have to put houses in, they can, they can do that. You can't take that away under the variance provisions.
You're saying though, that in the case of the awning shop as our example, the only allowable by right use of that property is to convert it to a residential property. And that is not suitable as a residential property in its current configurations. And that lots, I would argue, is probably very challenging. If they were to tear it down and try to build a conforming house on that property, it would be super, super challenging given the setbacks. So I don't
They can argue now. They can do that now.
I'm saying, those particular circumstances without, without a release valve.
They have a release valve now. They can go to the zoning hearing board now and ask for a variance. No, they can go to the zoning, when, when somebody wanted to do that on the corner of the, of Tom's Market on that corner, and they wanted to change the use to a restaurant, and it was a similar argument, the zoning officer said, no, you have to go for a variance, not a special exception. And they asked for a variance from what then was D two. It's already in the law. This, I don't know. This is something you can drive a truck through. It's an exception that swallows the rule.
I, I, again, I don't see the problem because it only kicks in when there's a change in the use district. Unless the Board of Commissioners changed the zoning for that district, three doesn't apply.
Well, what's the timeline then? Whenever a use district shall be changed? What's, I mean, the districts, the zoning districts have been changed. What's, what's the statute of limitations for that use district change? That somebody would qualify for this provision then?
I, I'm sorry, what's the question?
The, the whole trigger here is that says whenever a use district shall be here and after changed, existing non-conforming use may be changed to another non-conforming use. If the, if we're waiting for the, the change of a zoning district in order for somebody to claim this, what is the statute, what is the statute of limitations then? Because when was the last time the zoning districts were changed? Could, could they still claim this? It was changed fifteen years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Fifty years.
Fifty.
Well, here and after was whenever this was written. So if this was written fifty years ago, then
I would like to speak for a moment.
Sure.
I'd like to bring your attention to something. And there's no warranty here. This is not legal advice, but I just researched and basically the top line is what David states, that in general, it's a, you know, a non-conforming use or conform it. And now I quote, "That said, in determining whether a desired use is a change in use or an additional use, or merely just a continuation of the existing non-conforming use, Pennsylvania appellate courts have ruled that a new activity may be a permitted continuation of non-conforming use if it is similar to the existing use. It need not be identical to the existing non-conforming use, just similarity. For example, a pizza restaurant with seating was found to be similar to an existing use as a sandwich shop that limited seating and sold primarily takeout food. And likewise, it goes on for other examples." So the fact that that language is there, arguably as Maggie's saying, sort of reflects the fact that there, it's not black and white and that there's more
I would say it reflects that you don't need a special exception. You can get a permit if, if you're bored or you're, if, if you can convince folks that your deli with seating is a restaurant. Is similar to a restaurant. I, I, what does same classification mean? That's another issue. And, and by the way, you can't change an un-conforming use to another non-conforming use since the other use by definition is not non-conforming. It hasn't been used yet, so it doesn't pre-exist the code. So this is, this is language issues, but I don't know what same classification means. Same zoning classification? Same zoning classification as what?
May I, if I could just go on one more paragraph? And I quote, "Further, many municipalities permit by special exception or, or conditional use," and that's where you guys are dueling, "a change on a property from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. Such permission is specific to the municipality and subject to the specific criteria for the grant of such special exception or conditional use."
Which we don't have. And I did look through the code and I didn't see anything that allowed special exceptions other than you, the, a list of the specific special exceptions within a particular district, zoning district. So you can have cell towers in certain districts. I, I don't think there's any general, you can just have a special exception if the zoning hearing board thinks it's a nice idea. Which I have to say, I just think this is too vague. I don't know what same classification, same classification issue has come up in the past and I don't know what that means.
I mean, there, there are points in zoning where you can't account for everything and the code is vague enough to allow the discrepancy of the zoning officer to, to make a determination. So in the case, in the case of non-conforming to non-conforming, I've seen cases that have gone through that the, the courts upheld the zoning officer's determination that one use was substantially similar to another use and allowed the change of use to occur from one business owner to another business owner because of the substantive similarities of the, of the use.
There's a, let me, let me, let me agree with you. There's a raft of cases that say as long as this new use is substantially similar to the non-conforming use, the, there's discretion to permit the new use or the second use. That's not the issue. The issue is changing it to another use. And the law says you can't change, there's no right to change a non-conforming use to another use, which does not conform with the current law. And by the way, that's not a non-conforming use, that's an illegal use. So it should be worded, if you wanted to say it. What you're really saying is, a non-conforming use can be changed to a new illegal use.
Well, it's, it is one illegal use being changed to another illegal
No, it's one non-conforming use that existed and is grandfathered to one that isn't pre-existing and grandfathered. So it's just plain old illegal.
We're just arguing semantics.
No, we're not arguing semantics. We're arguing a legal right and not having a legal right. And I don't like having a exception that they, that owners or developers can drive a truck through.
Do you have a problem with the first paragraph? D one?
Only except as otherwise permitted in section D three below. Only except as otherwise permitted in section D3 below. The rest is okay.
So you're saying if I have a non-conforming use, I have to, and I want to change, then I have no recourse to go to another non-conforming use?
There is no other non-conforming use. What, what is the other non-conforming use?
Well, whatever doesn't, whatever's not in, that allows me, anything that doesn't allow me to do something in the ordinance to me is non-conforming. You call it illegal, I call it non-conforming. I think they're the same thing.
They're not. It's not, no, non-conforming is defined specifically to be a use that was legal and is not legal today. There, when you change a use that is non-conforming, that is, it was, it's grandfathered because it once was legal, and you come in and say, I'd like another use, and it's not legal, but, and it never was, but I want to change it to the other use.
Okay.
That's what that says.
And I suggest that this whole paragraph, D, be referred to our township solicitor, let him put in the wording that is legal.
It's not illegal.
David, I don't think the planning commission's equipped to figure out the legality of section D. I mean, you're, you're an attorney, so you have a head start on us, okay?
Not when it comes to this stuff, but...
That's why I think we don't know what we're talking about when it comes to D. I mean, when you put it bluntly, I, I think this is something that the, the township solicitor, who probably should know more about this than we do, should give us the wording for paragraph D. We can, we'll argue here all night as far as that goes.
Okay, well, my, my suggestion, my recommendation would be to delete in D1 the phrase, "Except as otherwise permitted in D3 below", and delete 2 because it's redundant, and delete 3 because it's not needed. There's no need for special exceptions for new uses. There, anytime, lots of people come in and say, I'd like to use my property for something that it hasn't been used for before, and they have procedures to do that.
What's the purpose of a used variance?
To change the use.
To change the use, to, to allow an illegal use?
A new use that is not permitted under the existing code.
That's an illegal use by your definition.
That would not be a legal use, that's why you go for a variance.
So you go for a variance. So special exception is the word, wrong word, we have to get a variance, is that...
That would be, that would be an improvement. I think conditional use would be even better, but...
The process between variance and special exception from the township perspective is pretty much the same, although there's more authority given to the zoning board for variances than, than for special exceptions. Special exception is, is allowed with conditions. A variance is where you have to prove a hardship.
Exactly.
Okay.
And a conditional use goes to the governing body, the elected officials.
So, so someone can change a non-conforming use to an illegal use, by your definition, if they get a used variance?
Yes.
Okay. Then I, I think maybe this goes all the way by, by changing the word special exception to variance?
Then it just is redundant of the code, but I, I suppose it's okay. I'd have to think about it.
Okay.
I still think conditional use is better, because you're really changing the zoning, and that would be better. But yes, at least then your rights of somebody with a non, the non-conforming use goes away if the owner doesn't want to continue the non-conforming use. That's the end of it. It's, it, either continue it, or you abandon it.
David?
And then you can do what you want. You can conform to existing zoning, or you can ask for a variance. That's what every owner has to do.
David, why don't we check in with Jamie and make sure she's taking note of those changes that you're writing?
I can write them up, I can get you a memo.
I, I have notes, and I, and I'm gonna be checking in with the, the solicitor. Good. I will say, the, the change is not changing of the district, because the, the use would still have to conform to the, the area and bulk regulations. So if there's any change, special exception to variance, yes, variance would have to prove a hardship. It's a higher burden of proof on the applicant to demonstrate that they're not causing harm to the community. But to call it a, a, well, never mind, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
I don't see anything here about bulk and area requirements. There's no, there's no criteria for the zoning hearing board here, so...
No, there's criteria. Their standards are determined, for determination of variances as special exceptions, and they're different for, for each.
But is there any specific conditions for special exception for non-conform, changes in non-conforming use, or is it just general conditions for special exception?
Well, they're general.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't have special exception conditions for each possible non-conformity. I think there's enough...
There are example, well, there are examples of, of municipalities that have specific special use conditions for predefined use types.
Like ours.
Oh, we don't.
We do.
But I think that's a little bit beyond the scope of what we want to consider tonight.
Agreed.
I'm just, I, I think we've covered this one. And I think the takeaway is that we're gonna get a legal interpretation as to whatever case law, because who knows how old this specific provision of the code is? So I'm curious if, if we could just get an update from what, what more current case law would, would say on the matter, so that we, it'll provide us with some direction for amendments if, if necessary.
There's one more minor issue here, and I think it goes to other provisions, and that, not minor. I think Angelo and others have pointed out that when, Matt, a conditional use, for example, would, I, I don't think it would be proper to have the planning commission review a special exception that goes to the zoning hearing board. That might be interfering with the judicial, quasi-judicial function of the board. Whereas a conditional use, the township would have the benefit of the planning commission and Mr. Panoni, which would review the engineering issues in more detail. The zoning hearing board doesn't have such resources. It's just another thought.
Well, the township can choose to intercede on any matter before the zoning hearing board.
Sure, they, they do have that discretion.
They always have the right to be a party to any, any proceeding before the board.
There was one change in D3, by the way. Before, it was, uh, went to the zoning hearing board after review and recommendation by the planning commission. That statement's not in here.
Without getting into all the examples, there were a few places where they deleted, where the, the draft deleted a review and recommendation by, or even review by the planning commission. And we're not looking for more things to do, but why was, why was that done?
Well, in this instance, um, the planning commission, we didn't understand why the planning commission would be reviewing and recommending something that would be a special exception that should go before the zoning hearing board.
As I said, that might be a problem. You could, you could put it in, but...
I think that that's the same for 182802B1. It says been authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board, and we struck following review and recommendation by the planning commission.
Maybe that's the reason.
It was mandated in the language before?
Yeah.
It was in the language before.
But it was mandated, not recommended, to go before the planning commission?
Following review and recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
By the planning commission.
I mean, because I've only been on the planning commission here for four years, but we, we get notice of what goes before the zoning hearing board, but I don't think that we've ever been asked to weigh in. Angelo, have, have you, has the planning commission ever been asked to formally make a recommendation on any matter before the zoning hearing board in your experience?
But sometimes we do.
We, we, we review sketch plans. We, one in particular was the gas station on Eagle Road.
Well, that's a sketch plan, I mean...
Yeah, but, but that's the, I mean, that's the instrument by which we get to review the plan. There's no formal, I mean, someone can make an application to the zoning board and doesn't come through us.
Right.
My, my sense is, or my thought is, that any, any potential plan that has to go through zoning, that is event, eventually going to be a land development or subdivision, should come to us first.
Right.
To get our comments. And that's, that's where a sketch plan comes in, because the applicant isn't, isn't going to spend all the money to do all the engineering work that's required to do a plan, only for us to say we don't like it, or whatever like that, knowing he still has to go to the zoning board. So generally speaking, most of the plans that go to the zoning board are sketch plans. There's not a lot of engineering detail. They may get into that as they go through a hearing, but initially, it's something, you know, drawn on a piece of paper to give the zoning board guys an idea of what we want to do. So it's not a policy that township has, has adopted, but I think it's a good one, that we look at anything that eventually is going to be land development. Now, we did miller roofing, but we didn't do it until after we went to zoning board.
Right, we have, yeah, because we've seen land developments that have already gone before zoning hearing board. I, I agree with you that it's helpful for the planning commission to review things prior to zoning hearing board when it goes to land development, to identify any other potential.
But even if it's, even if it involves traffic, for example, the, the zoning hearing board doesn't have a traffic engineer.
Well, traffic is a land development matter. I mean, it's, it's, it's reviewed during the land development process.
But, but not necessarily.
And they, the zoning board hears testimony from traffic engineers, believe me, they do.
Yeah, they do.
If the zoning board asks for it. Okay, they may not always ask for it, but, you know, in some cases, it's a good idea to have a traffic engineer present testimony to the zoning board, so that the zoning board can make a more informed decision on, on a project. But, but generally speaking, the zoning board is, their review is kind of geared to whatever the variance request is. They don't look at everything, they only, they're very narrow in what they have to look at, or what they should be looking at, you know? Sometimes they make recommendations that they have no business making, in my opinion. For instance, when we had the bank on Eagle Road and Darby Road, zoning board said you have to put a right turn lane in on Darby Road. And guess what? There wasn't room for a right turn lane. You know, now, they didn't know that at the time, but eventually, as it turned out, we eliminated that right turn lane, which means they had to go back to the zoning board and say, you know, we had to modify your order. So I, I think there are instances, and it's better to be, in my opinion, to have planning commission look at those types of plans before they go to the zoning board, so they can give their input, and we also have the benefit of a township engineer that the zoning board doesn't have. So...
And would that apply, per se, that kind of driveway if there is no change to the building? So it's not a building, it's, it's not a new building, it's not a new structure, it's just the same old building, but they want to do something different on that, those premises, and they want, say, a, an exception for parking and entrances and exits, in your example.
Which, which example?
The one on Eagle Road you mentioned.
The bank?
Yeah.
Oh, that went through land development?
But let's say it was not a land development project.
Well, then, which, chances are, back then, we wouldn't have seen it.
Right.
The, the lamplighter, we didn't see that, it's a land development plan. But they're redoing parking, they're, they're probably doing other improvements there that we knew...
They think we should.
Well, it depends on whether or not the township considered it a land development or not. We don't make that determination. Township staff says this has to go through land development, or this doesn't have to go through land development. Some townships, you build a driveway that has more than 2,000 square feet on it, you develop through land development. A driveway.
Okay. I don't want to cut people off, but it's getting late.